To begin our meeting for today, if I could get everybody to stand, we're going to have an indication first. You all pray with me. Most gracious heavenly Father, we would like to thank you for being able to assemble here today. We want to thank you for the freedom to be here and to voice our opinions and to do what's best for the community. We want to also thank you for those people that have served our nation and are serving at this present time that protect that freedom, that give up their lives and their dedication, and we want to thank you for that. We also ask you, O Lord, to give us guidance and direction to make the right choices for our community. We ask that you watch over our community and bless us and direct us, help us to be more responsible and to be responsible citizens and parents and to raise our children that way, and ask that you will give us a strong and compassionate community that's best for our future. And these things we ask of Jesus. Amen. Now, to record show that we're all here, that we have a quorum, we'll call a meeting to order, and Councilman Roscoe will lead us in the way he believes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. It is at this time in our meeting that we enjoy welcoming our visitors, and we take a few minutes to receive public comment. We would like to welcome everybody here this evening. We are glad that Brian is here, our lead representative, and that Gil Reynolds is here with Channel Six, Larry Thornton's here with the newspaper. A special thanks to the Youth Advisory Council for being here today. It, like I say, we want to welcome everybody else that is here, and what we try to do at this period, at this point in our meeting is to receive public comment from anyone that would like to make comments. Now, if you have comments that you'd like to make regarding the adoption of a juvenile curfew ordinance, we will have that hearing in just a minute, but if there's anybody that would like to make this regular public comments, then we'll open the floor for that right now. If not, then we'll move right on into our public hearing. The public hearing is in regard to receiving public comments or public input that concerns the possible adoption of a juvenile curfew ordinance. What I will do is I'll open the floor for people to make comments. I would like for you to direct your comments toward the possibility of that curfew and give us your opinion whether you believe in that or not, and I'd like for you to keep your comments directed towards that in as short as possible, so I will open the floor for that at present time. Now, if you would like to make comments, I'd ask that you approach the podium and that you introduce yourself if you would please. Like I say, we're all, we're glad that you're all here.
Right now?
Yes.
This is for my wife, she's a junior high principal, she couldn't be here because of her mother's illness. At the junior high, we have parents asking for help. We have student attendance issues, because students are out late and parents cannot get them up on time or at all. Is this more of a parent, parenting issue? Yes, I agree it is. We have a large population of students whose parents were teenagers when these youths were born. If you drive down American Boulevard at night, you often see large groups of youth hanging out in parking lots, crossing the highway, or in convenience stores. Large group of youth are in the two city parks after hours, as well as on school playgrounds. A juvenile curfew would at least give law enforcement the help needed in our community to make our parents responsible for the whereabouts of their children. It could help the environment within homes of parents who feel they cannot control their own children. I understand this is kind of a last resort deal, you know, that communities won't have to go through, but somehow we've got to make these kids understand that we love them and we care about them. And to me, this is the first step. I go all over the country selling in places, a lot of schools, and they tell me where there, you know, where there's curfew, that it really helps. It does a lot of good for those kids finally start understanding, you know, what life's all about. But, you know, big more work for the law enforcement, but, you know, what are these kids worth? To me, they're worth a lot. We've got to do something to turn the situation going the other way. That's all I've got to say.
Thank you.
Is there someone else that would like to make comments?
Hello, I'm Roper Kirby, and today I'll be speaking as an individual and not a part of Youth Advisory Council. Well, I'm not against the idea of youth curfew. The intended point of youth curfew is to simply abolish youth participation in such things teenagers often partake in in late hours, such as drugs, alcohol, gangs, et cetera, violence, things of that nature. I can see how a community could back such a noble thing, and I have a hard time, even in my early years, not backing such a noble thing. But as I had said earlier, it is not because, it is, but as I said earlier, it is not because I'm against the idea of youth curfew, but I do not feel that this is a practical means for eliminating such activities given the town that we live in. For everybody who does not know, it is to my understanding that our police department only has one police officer on patrol during nine hours. According to the studies I've done, there is little evidence that suggests that youth curfews work all that efficiently, especially in small towns. Juvenile crime experts say that the problem with enforcing curfews is that it requires police officers to divert valuable time from crime revenge, from crime prevention and patrol. And if an officer, for example, comes across a teen who's past 10:00 PM, the officer is required to take him, take either, to take, to either take the kid home or to a late ninth police department-run youth center. According to the 2009 OPD memo, each such occurrence likely would take up to 60 minutes or minutes of the officer's time, and it could be much longer than that if the cop decides to arrest a repeat violator of the curfew ordinance. In that case, it could take up to several hours to fill out a police report. My solution, I feel, is simple. Either don't accept the new ordinance, or accept the ordinance for 12 o'clock or later and also give the police department the much deserved and needed taxpayer money in order to keep more than one officer on patrol for the safety of Milschu.
Thank you.
My name is Estella Duarte, and I've lived here 15 years, 17 years, excuse me, and I feel that we need a curfew for all the kids here in Milschu. I believe that anything that happens after midnight is not a good thing. I understand that that will require time away, you know, for the police to be on the lookout and, like Roper said, it would take extra time and stuff, but I firmly believe that if we enforce a curfew and after a while, when they keep stopping the kids and stopping the kids, it will make them realize that they're going to get pulled over every time or, you know, arrested or whatever it is they decide to do. And after a while, some of that activity will be curtailed because they don't want to be, you know, stopped every time. They don't want to be what they consider harassed every time. And a lot of the things that happen after midnight, you know, there's break-ins, there's, you know, people causing vandalism, the kids are out there vandalizing, and that will put a stop to a lot of that, and I just feel like it will be a safer neighborhood if we have curfew. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nancy Bennett, I've lived here over 20 years also, and, you know, open eyes. I mean, I live out in the country, so I don't see all of that, and I didn't realize all the kids you see in town at night and everything. I agree with Dawn, we're not doing it to, we don't, I don't want you to do it to be mean, it's because we love them, and it's called tough love. When you take young children, you say, "You cannot do this," and it's for your best interest. And also, I'm getting older, I drive through town, I'm having trouble with my car, I pull over and there's a bunch of kids that are mischievous or whatever, I wouldn't feel very safe. I would be a little bit worried about it. But I think we're asking this because we do love the kids, we want, we don't want them to get in trouble after midnight, protect them from themselves, someone.
Thank you.
I'm Garrison Myers, I'm here speaking as an individual, not a part of the Youth Advisory Council. There have been many court challenges to curfew laws around the nation, and so far, courts are split on this issue. With no U.S. Supreme Court ruling on the issue, there's no easy answer to offer. In general, lower courts recognize that curfews impose restrictions to the First Amendment and have struck down many laws that impose too heavy a burden on the exercise of youth's freedom of speech and assembly. In this, they stand their ground in the fact that constitutional rights do not mature and come about at a certain age, but a person is born with constitutional rights. The Youth Advisory Council has come to a decision in our meeting today, which will be discussed at a later time in this meeting. On the other hand, weeks ago, I exchanged a few emails with the City of Lubbock's chief police, Mr. Ellis, about their juvenile curfew. He stated, "In years past, we would have spiked rates of vandalism, thefts, vehicle burglaries, and teen parties, so we enforced the curfew." Following this, I replied and said, "So in the City of Lubbock, it was necessary for the ordinance to be enforced, but do you find it a need for a small-town community that is not experiencing the significant crime to enforce the curfew? And do you agree or disagree that the curfew, that a curfew should be left to parents and crimes should be left to the police?" He replied and said, "If Milschu truly needs an ordinance and it is enforced, I believe that it should definitely be enforced in a fashion that is right for the community, if enforcement is needed, however." And I agree that parenting responsibility belongs to the parents. By this, I took it that Mr. Ellis, a chief of police, had a mixed opinion along with the U.S. Supreme Court. But now I'd like to share my thoughts on this issue. In a free country, it is not our place to decide what is appropriate for our neighbor to do or not to do. Freedom doesn't require proof to justify one's decisions. If a teen wants to take a stroll and gaze at the moon, that's her decision. If a teen feels it's too hot during the day and prefers jogging at night or early in the morning, that's his decision. If a teen wants to go to the park and count blades of grass at 3:00 in the morning, from what harm do I suffer? Freedom is not the result of exceptions to the law, the laws are exceptions to freedom. And in saying this, I agree that if a teenager or an adult is out at late hours of the night and they are breaking the law, then the police should enforce the law and take care of the situation without having the government jeopardizing anybody's freedom. Juvenile curfews have expanded across the state to address a public concern of juvenile crime and violence. A study was once done in California that studied the analysis of arrests, reported crimes, and mortality data. I learned in my research that at the end of this study, there was no data that supported the hypothesis that a juvenile curfew lessened the crime. At times, Milschu has experienced some crime and violence that takes place at night. In my research, I discovered that Milschu only has one police officer patrolling during the night. With this being a fact, I find that some problems in this town do go hand-in-hand with youth being out at night. I also say that rather than punishing all of the youth of this town, it should be looked into that there be more police on patrol at night, and that the police take responsibility and take care of the crime and violence that might be taking place at night. It seems unfair and unjust that the youth's freedom be jeopardized when a problem may be solved by an increase in patrol and an increase in police activity. I also have a concern that if the government jeopardizes the youth's freedom, it will cause teenagers to rebel and try to prove a point, leading to this community receiving something they simply did not bargain for. If this happens, however, how will the police enforce the ordinance with just one patrolling officer anyways? Also, after discussing this issue among fellow teenagers, many of us feel as if the citizens, some, not all citizens, but few citizens of this town are looking down on us because we have been stereotyped as young teens who stir up trouble. This seems unfair to us that we are being looked down upon simply due to our age. I hope that no one will confuse my disagreement with a lack of understanding or a lack of respect. I understand the point that is being made. I understand that some people of this town simply want to keep the youth safe, and I want to, and they want to extend their caring nature as they strive for better for our youth. I want the same. I want a bright future for my fellow youth, but in the same realm, I also strive for justified rights for our fellow youth. And I believe that if there are youth out doing illegal things, then the police can teach them a lesson that they do deserve without jeopardizing their freedom. I believe that this issue should be resolved by the police officers as it is their responsibility rather than punishing us. Also, there may be misguided youth in this town, but there are also plenty of parents who are capable of setting a curfew for their own child. Some parents choose to do this, and some choose not to do this, but whichever they choose, the fact is still true that the child has a parent, and parenting should be left to guardians. It is not this city's responsibility to parent a child, it is this city's responsibility to keep the streets safe, which can be done by the police officers who receive a salary from the parents themselves as taxpayers. As stated before, I understand where the concerns are coming from, but there is no significant reason that allows the government to step in and put our freedom at stake. I personally think that if there was a draft made and it was considered for the decision to be made at a later time, that would be a great way to go about it. But being a citizen and a youth of this town, I've carefully and open-mindedly researched this topic. I'm very blessed to be a part of this community and very proud to be a youth of Milschu. And fulfilling my standing as a youth, I am here to respectfully give my outlook on a juvenile curfew for Milschu. I've given my opinions and stated what I think is right. However, no matter what the city council decides, I will uphold their decision with respect. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Josh, why don't you go ahead and give the report from the Youth Council?
He was going to call in there when we get to it.
When they get to it.
Okay. Is there anyone else that would like to make a comment?
I guess I'll go with somebody else. I don't have nothing prepared of Lester Kirby. Going to try to remember what it was like, be young. Just taking some notes of what everybody said. I do have a brother-in-law that's an officer, and we have talked about it a little bit. I know it puts a burden on officers because exceptions have to be made, and there's a lot of opinions on what exceptions is right and what exceptions is not right, and I think that's too big a burden to put on that officer. You know, we would all have different opinions on who should be out. I'm a big believer in individual responsibility. I think this law affects the innocent. We make the law, we're not against, you know, somebody that's done something wrong, it's against somebody that might do something wrong. If we shut all of us down at midnight, it'd make the laws a lot easier to enforce. I don't, I don't think we should do that. China, you know, don't have much crime, but they don't have no rights, so I think we've got to find what's right there as far as how many laws that we want to put on our people, even though they're not.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else? If not, we're going to go ahead and close our public hearing, and like I said, we welcome all of you here today, and we really do appreciate you being here and making comments and participating in our meeting. We will take all of you into consideration and all the things that you have said, and I appreciate you taking the time to be here today. So we're going to go ahead and close our public hearing, and we're going to begin with our regular agenda. The first thing on our agenda is the approval of the minutes of the council meeting of December the 12th. I entertain that you've read those minutes, and I'll open the floor for a motion to approve them. Any other motion?
Second.
And a second, and to approve those minutes. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor of approving those minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Those who vote no, motion carries. The next thing on our agenda is to consider action concerning the adoption of juvenile curfew ordinance. I'm going to, first of all, I'm going to turn the floor over to Garrison Myers and ask him if he would relay the thoughts and the mood of our Youth Advisory Council as to their thinking and the action that they took towards the curfew.
We had a really good meeting today, we had a really good discussion, I thought it went great, I think we all thought it went great. At the end of our meeting, by a vote of five to four, the Youth Advisory Council recommends to the city council to draft a curfew ordinance that can be created by a committee and then be voted on after review.
Thank you.
I was privileged to attend your meeting earlier today, and I want to thank all of you for your comments, and it was a very, it was a really good meeting, and lots of comments that were made, both pro and con, and I think you all talked about, about every, every area that would be covered, through the creation of an ordinance or not, and I really appreciate all of the things. Appreciate the, you know, the research that you've done, and it was really neat, I wish everybody could have been here to hear that, so. I think what, what we'd like to do is kind of talk about this a little bit. It's going on with the council, if you have comments you'd like to make about the possibility of a curfew, we'd like to hear those. One, we've already opened the floor for those comments, and we won't have any comments from the public now.
Right.
No.
I only have questions.
Well, the questions are not from the floor, the questions now are with the council and what the council, action the council wants to take.
I can't make a question to the council?
You could have done that when we had the floor for public comments.
No, 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 this is, this is considering, considering your item and not the two.
Well, let me, let me repeat what I just said, we opened the floor for public comment, and if you had questions you would like to make.
This is not a comment, this is a question.
Well, this is in, this is among the council and the staff as to what direction we think we would like to take at this time, okay? Next time, I'd like for you to make those comments during the time allotted today.
This is not a comment, this is a question.
Well, question to comment, you go on. The floor's not open now for the public to comment. Okay? All right. Dave, you have some things you'd like to say about the possibility of curfew or the consideration of it?
You know, if, the adoption of the curfew, I think it's going to take a lot of consideration and certain assistance from the authorities to make sure that we comply with all of the requirements that the courts have set out. You have a sample of curfew, I think, there in front of you. I have some, some questions that I think if a curfew is drafted and achieved, would be to be involved as far as how we implement the curfew, how you handle juveniles when they're not apparent or a guardian, to take that juvenile to, some real mechanics, mechanics of the ordinance that I have questions about. I think the council has got some great input from the community. Should have that discussion and consider which way you want to go.
It's, I guess I'll start off, I, you know, it's, this has been an issue that we've kind of kicked around here for a couple of months, and I've spent a lot of time talking to a lot of people about this, and I was, I was very excited to get here, to be here and hear the Youth Advisory Council. You know, I, in the beginning, I decided that, you know, as far as my opinion is, it's not, you know, it's not our challenge to take away the rights of our community. I hate it when the government does that, and we see that almost on a daily basis. And I hate the thought of even considering that. Another thing that bothers me about this is the fact that I hate to think about punishing the youth of our community that are responsible. And we have a really good example of that right here in the meeting. You know, you always have a few bad apples in the barrel, and they're the ones that make all the good ones, you know, smell bad, and I hate them. Another thing that I don't like about the possibility of an ordinance is to put our officers in the position where it is their opinion of enforcement on how those ordinances should, should be enforced, you know, and I hate to put them in a predicament to where if they're out at 2:00 in the morning and you have an ordinance and they run across a young person that's 15 years old, and they can't take them to jail, and they can't take them home with them, and they can't ride around with them in the car all night. So, you know, what do you do with somebody in that situation? If their parents are not home and their parents are not responsible, then what do you do with those children, and how does the police officer react, you know, to those You know, and I, and I really did not want to even consider the fact that we should even need an ordinance in this town, but after I sat, you know, I talked to a lot of young people, and then I sat and listened to the, to the meeting earlier today, it was, you know, the ones that were here are the responsible parties, but if they feel like an ordinance could make a difference in the community, then I'm willing to, to listen to what they think might work and appreciate the fact that it was your opinion that if there was a curfew and a curfew ordinance was drafted to where it was really good for the community, then you could live with that, and I appreciate that, so. That's what I meant, man.
I agree with the mayor. If I had a vote on tonight, I would probably vote against it because I don't think it's the city's job to tell somebody when to, when they need to be home. I do think there's an epidemic, I think the parents of this town need to tend to business and control their children, but I'm willing to listen to, see what a committee or some people have, hear some more thoughts.
I pretty much feel the same way. I'm not convinced yet that City of Milschu needs a curfew. I can see the pros and cons both ways. Just from the input here tonight, I can see that I think the town is probably going to be kind of split on whether they think we need it or not. And I, I just don't know. I don't really, I don't think we need to draft an ordinance if we don't think there's one needed. But I wouldn't be against more input or a committee or however we're going to do it, to either help us decide whether we need it or come up with a grab of something that might be workable, and that's just a lot of things to consider. I certainly don't want to punish anybody by any stretch. by any stretch. I think most of the kids in, in our town are, are good, solid, responsible citizens. Just because you're a kid doesn't make you different than everybody else. Yes, we do have bad apples. As always, every place else I've ever seen. Do we need to go this far to control it? I, I don't know. But I would like to have more, more input than that before I make a decision, yeah, or no, of whether we even need one of those places to try to grab something.
One of the words that I kept hearing throughout all the conversations and the opinions that were giving, given were punishment, parenting, and safety. And definitely, I don't look at it as a punishment because I know that the youth that are very responsible and the parents that are responsible, you already have a curfew. You have one and I know that it's, I mean, you follow it and you abide by it and so that is not an issue. As far as parenting goes, I agree with Councilman McElroy. Parents need to step up and take care of their children and make sure they know where they are, that it is their job. And then the safety. This issue came to me, came to light to me when I started doing police ride-alongs. And so when I was with an officer, you know, between midnight and four in the morning and every time, you know, in the middle of the night, there were youth out in the streets and they weren't high school kids, they were junior high age. And, and I thought, wow, what are they doing? You know, and the officer would pull over and say, do y'all need anything? Are you okay? Is there something we can do? No, we're just, we're not doing anything. And I thought, and we couldn't, and the police officer couldn't do anything. And you're right, there's a lot of details to go into it, but I would have felt better because I don't know what they were, had been doing or what they were going to do or if they weren't going to do anything. And you're right, maybe, and you can look at it as infringing upon their freedom that we're going to take them up and take them somewhere to do something with them. At the same time, as I, I've also talked to others, you know, there's a concern of safety because if there are kids in the neighborhood are running around or doing things and that they are vandalizing them, you can't do anything. Now, if they're breaking the law, yes, a police officer can do something. But if they're disturbing the peace or those things like that, or they're out there, that scares community members. You know, I have a concern for that as well. I would love to be able to have a committee to come together and look at this and have those who have an opinion of being against it and, and/or being for it together to look at that. And you're right, just to say that we are going to research it more doesn't mean it. That's what we want to do. But I don't, my opinion is that we need to research it more, get more opinion. What the youth council did today was superb. It was absolutely superb because those, I mean, you had strong opinions and you gave them and you learned what it was to take that vote and say, this is what we would like to see. Um, I would like to see that committee come to, to fruition and, and get that opinion and see what is out there as far as the community because this is a community issue. This is the freedom that we have to be able to do that and to investigate that. That's where my concern was, was seeing it firsthand that they're out, but there are out there in the streets. And you're right, there's nothing to be good, good to be done after midnight, you know, or two or three in the morning. And I know there's lots of issues to look at and that's why I don't think any of this should be taken lightly or should be rushed into at all. But I have a concern and, and also as an educator, you know, when just, when they show up at school and they are sleepy or they don't want to do anything because they have been out all night. And, I mean, you know, you're right, I'm not a mom and I'm not a dad, but I do have, I feel like I have a responsibility to help with that. And that comes along with their safety as well and, and teaching them responsibility. And there's an argument to be said about that too. You know, that's a mom and dad's job. I feel like I need to step in when mom and dad don't because, and that is in the positive sense and never in the negative.
I got a question for the city, uh, lady. Do you see a lot of young kids on the street after midnight?
At different times, it fluctuates. I mean, even when we have mild winters, it's, it's, they're still out, but during the, when it gets to spring and summer and early fall, yes, we'll, we'll, we'll constantly catch them loitering in the alleys, walking in the alleys or, you know, at all subs or crossing the streets at places other than the, uh, the intersections and things like that where it's really hard to see them. But, I mean, yeah, they're, they're out at all hours.
Well, kids, I'm a real, uh, mayor on y'all too. Hello, kids. We have almost a hundred and twenty kids in our church that goes through Wednesday. And, uh, most of these kids, they go home when we ask them to go home. I think that we need to sit, we need to sit down and just give a committee going to get this going because, uh, I'm not y'all's parents. I got two kids myself. I raised them. I think we need to, uh, sit down and study this more. Get a committee going. Talked to David earlier and he gave us some good inputs. And I was worried at one time, but when I talked to him, it kind of changed my, my subject, so. I think we need to get a committee so we can get this going.
Chief, would you like to make some comments about the enforcement issue that you look at here and the personnel issue? How it would really affect your, your department?
I thought the comments were all.
Well, the public comments were all.
Is he a councilman or a mayor?
I'm not going to come up here and make any comments or, or ask any questions of the council, particularly, uh, addressing the, uh, the ordinance that's being considered or even thought about. You're asking of me a question of how that's going to affect a department within the city, so I'll respond to that. As how it will respond, how it will affect our department, in other agencies that I've been at, uh, Borger, Frich, we've had these ordinances. Frich, we were one man department, you know, one person on shift and then we were only on until about four, five o'clock in the morning, then we were on call. We would handle the juvenile curfew issue just like we would anything else. Uh, we catch what we catch and, and we deal with that. There would be a s- additional strain to the workload of an officer. I mean, that's just, it's just going to happen. At least for the first little bit and then sometimes it seems that the, once the curfew matures and is there on the books for a while, the violations tend to dwindle a bit. I'm not going to say it's going to go completely away. That'd be foolish. Does that pretty much answer the, the questions you were looking for?
That, that, it does. Now, you know, if you had an officer that approached a fifteen-year-old subject in a curfew situation after hours, his parents were out of town, had nowhere to take him, what, what do you do with somebody like that? You have to have a holding facility? I mean, you can't take them to jail.
We cannot put them in the county jail and they have not committed, created, uh, committed an offense of a class B or misdemeanor or higher so they cannot be housed in Lubbock at the juvenile facility. What we would do is exhaust all opportunities to try and locate grandparents, aunts, uncles, brothers, sisters, cousins, whoever the parents would normally leave them with. Uh, if all those attempts fail, then we would be forced to contact the state, which would be the Child Protective Services. And then if we could get them out, get them involved in, most times if there's not a guardian or a parent available on the spot in these type of scenarios, they have somebody on call to handle them, they would be placed with a foster family within the jurisdiction of the police department. Now, how much time that's going to take? If, in the maximum way. And I mean, then you start talking about all the, the overtime issues with the officers, the clock starts ticking on how long we can hold them at the police department and a curfew violation there. And I believe by the code of procedure, the maximum I can hold them, the, the curfew violation is six hours. So. Yes, sir. Do you have any other questions? Yes, sir.
Do you have any other comments? I'll sure open the floor for a motion. If anybody wants to make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we form a committee to further resort, research, um, possible ordinance. I don't know if at this time we could, during that committee meeting, if there could be a draft of one or look at all the different details of one at that time as well.
I would think it appropriate to put a committee be, be asked with draft of the curfew orders to address some of the issues that we've talked about, the housing.
Some exceptions, some of the concerns, some of the things.
Yeah, well.
So all of that could be done during?
Yes.
With, with those committees?
I might ask you to consider your motion to authorize the mayor to appoint that committee.
Okay. Would you like to make a motion for the mayor to authorize members of the committee to?
Authorize the mayor to.
Okay.
So you don't have to have a special meeting?
That was my concern was how, how are we going to do it? Is it going to be appointment, uh, nominations by individual councilman or volunteers or what?
Yeah, I would think, certainly reach some folks through Channel Six and, and put in the newspaper, somebody would volunteer, certainly, if they would contact us and the mayor could consider making an appointment. I certainly would think that you would want to consider some of the folks who've made comments here to that.
I think they would do it to the mayor, to the committee.
I'll second with that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to, uh, appoint a committee to study what we need to do to curfew or to prepare.
Study and draft.
Study and.
I think if you're going to come back and look at the issue again, you should have something that, that you can vote on or not.
We have that motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion carries. Uh, the next thing on, on the agenda is to consider a recommendation from the Yewshu Economic Development Corporation to fill a vacancy on the MEBC board. Now, let me make a statement before we move on with that. Aye. For me to appoint a committee, I will be up for suggestions and volunteers and we will research that thoroughly and I would like to see some of the youth advisory council participate in that too, if, if you would consider that, so.
And I would say more, Mayor, uh, are we only set a number or maybe a minimum number?
I would be so.
I mean, I don't think we're set a maximum by any means, but.
I'll take suggestions. Okay, all right. Now, we're going to consider that recommendation, recommendation from the MEBC to fill a vacancy on their board.
There, there are two vacancies that, on the, on the MEBC board. The board met last Thursday and recommended Jose Sanchez be reappointed to the board and that Dustin Klebner be appointed to the board.
I'll make a motion that we appoint those two gentlemen to the board and directors of the Yewshu Economic Development Corporation.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no? Motion carries. The, uh, next thing on our agenda is to consider appointing Mayor Black to an unexpired term on the Baytown County appraisal district board. Let you talk about that, David.
Councilman McElroy has asked to excuse from that board and ask that, that it replace him, be appointed to fill his unexpired term, which will expire at the end of this year when Mayor Black agrees to serve one more term. I don't, I don't think so either.
I would like to motion to appoint Mayor Black to serve for the mayor of that town.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Councilman McElroy, I would like to thank you for your service. We certainly appreciate your time and efforts to do well.
Thank you.
There's no more discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no? Motion carries. Next thing is to receive the investment summary and financial report for the quarter of MEBC, third first of last year. I hope that you've all had a chance to, to, uh, review that line by line. Is there any questions or comments as to that, uh, financial report? If not, I'll make a motion that we, uh, approve that investment summary and report.
My second is that.
We have a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no? Motion carries. Next thing on our agenda is to receive a report from the Yewshu Youth Advisory Council. And, uh, I'll turn the floor over to you.
Oh, good afternoon, everyone, and I'm Belinda Pacheco and on Garrison's behalf, I would like to give the report for the meeting we had today. And we had a great, um, weekend, actually. We had our brisket lunch and we had our bingo and they were both great successes and, um, as a part of the youth advisory council, we'd like to thank everyone that helped. It was just so awesome. All you guys, see you guys in the kitchen, running around. I thought it was, for me, it was a really great experience, experience watching the adults do everything. We really truly appreciate it and thank you so much once again. And we have two more fundraisers to help for our youth summit, which will be January the twentieth and the twenty-second, which is coming up. And we'd like to go ahead and invite everyone to go to the basketball games this week where we will be selling bracelets and, uh, three-point contest, I believe, three-point shooting contest.
We'll have a, a raffle.
Or a raffle, a raffle to win a basketball signed by the varsity teams. That should be fun. And once again, we're extremely excited about the summit and our adventures to come. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I've never heard, heard it put quite that way. I've never heard that pronounced expression, but I've got the original community that has that part.
The dogs working in the kitchen.
I appreciate those, they all work. Now, I'll say this, I was there and I know I'm going to do all the work and we appreciate you guys and the work that you put in and your parents and, and, and really enjoyed it. It was a, a great week. And, uh, glad that your fundraising went okay. Anything else? Any questions of the youth advisory council?
Make any money?
Yeah.
Yeah, we do. A little ways to go, but they did do it.
Well, that's good.
Yeah. Thank you for good efforts.
They made about, they made about seventeen hundred dollars.
Yeah, you saved me a piece. I did, please.
Okay, uh, next thing on the agenda is the administrative reports. David, I'm going to let you take care of that.
Thanks, Mayor. We're really happy to announce that on January the seventeenth of two thousand and twelve, we'll be opening bids for renovation and improvements in the place where Chris Black.
Woo!
Yay!
That's been a, a staple on our agenda for a number of years since then.
Yes.
We are moving forward. But also want to announce that the, uh, elected officials conference will be February the seventeenth and nineteenth in San Antonio. I know Mayor Proton Mason has plans to go. If anybody else has any visions, they let us know. The homes that are being constructed on the home program, the contractor consultants tell me they'll be through by January the fifteenth.
The fifteenth?
It will be soon. I know the twenty-fifth there, I may not be as optimistic as they are.
Oh, okay.
But, uh, things are, things are moving well. If you have a curfew by the seventh of August, you'll look at it, really.
When they, when it's completed, you do like, I mean, you call the family and you?
We'll do, you know, last.
We'll do, you know, last year, when Mary was with us, we went to each home individually and gave them the keys.
Would you let us know when that happens and if we're free, could we be a part of that? Because I know you had pictures of it and that just seeing the pictures was just awesome.
Videos.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Fuel farm at the airport is installed and wired up, I think. We're waiting on getting our merchant ID number through the credit card network that we'll be using for that. All the pilots out there are really excited to see that going. It's going to be a nice facility and I think a really nice addition to the airport. The other thing I have is that February the 4th is the first day to file an ad for a place on the ballot for the May election. And the mayor, Mayor Black, is turning his up this year, that may be the election to be had. That's all I've got, Mayor.
Thank you. Once again, I want to thank everybody for helping us today and for you guys' dedication. Does there something else to meet?
I want to thank the community for coming out. This is a great group of kids, they really are. I mean, I'm very proud of each and every one of you and what you do and what you're learning. So, I want to thank everybody who did help. It made a huge, huge difference. And the brisket was delicious, I had about this much food. All good. It was absolutely wonderful. So, thank you.
I want to appreciate, tell everybody, I appreciate them coming out for the comments on the...
Yes, very much so. Makes a huge difference.
We need more.
We do. Most of everybody gone, we do appreciate you, appreciate the comments. Come back next month. All right, I guess we'll, John? Thank y'all.